Good morning and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing on the Committee of Environmental Protection. At this time, please silence all electronic devices. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Thank you. Let me silence my own phone. Okay, ready? Good morning. I am Jim Gennaro, Chair of the Committee on Environmental Protection. Today, we'll be holding an oversight hearing on the city's water quality obligations under the DEC/CSO Consent Order, and the city's municipal separate storm sewer system, MS4, will also be hearing related legislation. Each year, billions of gallons of sanitary sewage and stormwater runoff enter the city's waterways due to combined sewer overflows. That said, many years ago, it was like 100 billion or whatever it is, and now it's a mere fraction of that, so good on us. CSOs which occur when the volume of sewage and runoff exceed the capacity of the city's wastewater treatment plants discharge from these overflows includes fecal coliform bacteria, which can prevent safe recreation in the city's waterways and can harm our coastal waters. While the quality of the city's waterways has significantly improved over the last 40 years, CSO events continue to impose environmental and economic costs. The city has more than 6,400 miles of sewer mains, I'm told, with an approximate average of 91 years. The city is serviced, served by 14 wastewater treatment plants that have a total combined treatment capacity of approximately 1.8 billion gallons daily. While 60% of New York City is served by a combined sewer system, which routes wastewater and stormwater runoff to treatment plants for processing prior to discharge to local waterways. However, only one-tenth of an inch of precipitation per hour, again, I am told, is enough to overwhelm wastewater treatment plants and trigger a CSO event. CSO events are expected to become more frequent as climate change increases precipitation in New York City. New York City Panel on Climate Change, oh, that's the one that I created in law, isn't it? Oh, yeah. Let the record show that I patted myself on the back. New York City Panel on Climate Change predicts that the volume of annual rainfall will rise 1 to 8% in the 2020s, 4 to 11% in the 2050s, and up to 19% by 2100. You get the idea. More importantly, the number of days per year in which the city will experience enough rain to trigger a CSO event is expected to increase substantially. So, well, I can erase here. The MPCC finds that the number of days in which the city will experience rainfall in excess of the, of two inches may increase by as much as 2,300 by the 2050s, and the New York City Department of Emergency Management reports that there is a 90% probability that New York City will experience an increase in heavy downpours by mid-century. Again, you get the idea. In 2012, a consent order between DEP and the DEC started development of 11 long-term control plans, one for each of the city's sewer sheds. These measures are intended to evaluate long-term solutions to reduce CSO events and bring the city's waterways into compliance with state and federal standards. We look forward to the administration's testimony with regard to CSO and MS4 discharges. And then let's get into the legislative part of the hearing. Intro 102 would require DEP to post on its website a map of all green roofs in the city, in the city, period. Per section, blah, 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 of the administrative code, "Green roof is wholly or partially covered by a living vegetative system." The map would also include some information about each green roof, including the type of building, the area of the roof, and the area covered by the green roof system, the capacity of the green roof to absorb water and the functions, or of water and the function or functions of the green roof. Intro 239 would require DOB to conduct a targeted outreach, to conduct targeted outreach every five years to inform local building owners about the solar and green roof requirements of Local Law 92 of 2019 and Local Law 94 of 2000, Local Law 92 and 94 of 2019, which mandate that all new buildings or roof replacements include solar voltaic system generating, generating capacity of at least four kilowatts, a green roof system or a combination of the two. DOB would also be required to post notices and educational materials on the department's website and submit a report describing the methods of targeted outreach employed by DOB every five years. Intro 531 would require DEP to issue an annual report on the condition of the critical drainage, of the city's critical drainage infrastructure, including a description of the operational condition of treatment facilities, pump stations, and other critical drainage infrastructure, and specific details regarding all previous instances in the past that the infrastructure was operating at a reduced capacity or out of service. Intro 532 would require DEP to create a plan for establishing New York City, New York City's coastal waters as vessel no discharge zones, and to install these three pump-out facilities per year until all coastal, until all coastal waters are so designated. Okay, until all, whatever, and report annually on the progress toward the goal of establishing all of the city's coastal waters as vessel no discharge zones. Intro 533 would require, would require DEP to study and report on the presence of contaminants from combined, from CSOs in New York City waterways and the department's progress towards milestones noted in the Sewer Overflow Long-Term Control Plan. The department is also required to study the effectiveness of its current regulations and chlorination treatments for raw sewage. The department would then develop a watershed management plan, as well as a green infrastructure plan with the assistance of an advisory group. Is this the statement that I tweaked, or is this the original one? Anyway, the department, I get the statement, I make modifications to it. I'm not sure if this is the one I modified or the one that Samara gave me, but they're both good. The department would then develop a watershed management plan, as well as a green infrastructure plan with the assistance of an advisory group. Both the study and the report are required on a yearly basis, and the watershed management plan is required on a yearly basis beginning 2023. That's pretty soon. The commission would also be required to hold a public hearing to present the reports and allow a public comment period for finalizing any plan or recommendations. Intro 603 would direct DOB, no, this is, yeah, because my statement, I got down to a couple of pages, but anyway, but this is a matter of statement, so you're getting the good one. Intro 603 would direct the Department of Buildings with assistance from DEP, the Fire Department, and any other relevant agency to conduct a year-long study to determine the feasibility of implementing solar-ready measures for commercial building. DOB would then be required to submit a report to the Speaker and the Mayor with results of this study. 614, intro 614 would require the DCAST to create a pilot program on the low, on the use of low-emission exhaust pipes. Pilot program would encompass 20% of all motor vehicles owned by the city, 20% doesn't sound like a pilot to me, but it sounds like more than a pilot, but we'll talk about that. All mother city that are not run exclusively by electric power because they are already, they're not, they're not, you know, run by electricity. The bill would also require DCAST to provide a written report to the Speaker and post such report on its website not later than one year following the start of the pilot program. Report would include the cost of the pilot program and the emissions reductions from the program. Phew. I would like to thank the terrific committee staff who've done such great work over the years, Committee Counsel Samara Swanson, to my left, Policy Analyst Ricky Chala, he is great, Andrew Born, the new guy, who's also very good, Financial Analyst Andrew Lane Lawless, great guy, and finally, and last but not least, my great LD Nabi Cor for all of her hard work and everyone's hard work. That was something. I'm like tired now. We are joined by Councilmember Julie Menon, a great member of this committee. We got bills of hers.
Hank, Holden, and Moya on Zoom.
Oh, okay, all right. All right, Councilmember is Hank, Holden, and Moya on Zoom. We welcome them, and, oh, just one minute. Okay, with that said, I, oh, I'm sorry, we got, we got Ari Kagan, a member of the committee to my right, he was supposed to be on the list, you know, he's sitting right there.
Okay.
Okay. Ari, sorry about that. We love you. Okay. And with that, with everyone duly recognized, I turn it over to Samara to do some housekeeping, to get everybody sworn and all that.
Would you please raise your right hand?
You got, you gotta put your thing on.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth today, and answer faithfully to the council member?
Okay. Okay, hang on one second, I gotta get a pen. Where's my pen? This is the all-other backpack that my wife got for me. It's very sort of stylish, don't you think?
Yep.
All in favor? Very good. Now, leather backpack is like, I like backpacks, and she says, like, at your age, you can't be running around with, you know, you can't look like a kid. I have to find you like a dignified backpack. And so, there it is. So that's now on the record. Okay, isn't that wonderful? Anyway, but what is wonderful, I'm sure, is going to be your testimony. They're all ready to go, right? Okay. Pleasure to have you all here. I look forward to your good testimony, and with that, you may commence.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Gennaro, and members of the Environmental Protection Committee. I am Vincent Sapienza, the Chief Operating Officer at the Department of Environmental Protection, or DEP. I'm here today with my colleague Deputy Commissioner Angela Alcada to speak about the city's investments to improve harbor water quality through operating permits and a consent agreement with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. My testimony will touch on the DEP-related bills being heard today, and then I will turn to my colleagues Keith Kerman from the Department of Citywide Administrative Services and Gina Bokra from the Department of Buildings to speak on other legislation. Four of the bills being heard today relate directly to DEP. Three of them propose new reporting requirements. Intro 102, which would require a map of green roofs to be posted online.
Hang on, I'm reading from the wrong, I'm reading from the wrong statement. I got a Buildings, and I got a DCAST, is the, okay. There we go. Okay, now I'm situated.
Got it.
Please continue.
Thank you. Intro 102, which would require a map of green roofs to be posted online. Intro 533, which would require reporting on progress towards decreasing the presence of sewage and stormwater contaminants in the city's waterways. And intro 531, which would require reporting on the condition of drainage infrastructure. DEP already reports extensively on these topics, so we would like to work with the council to ensure that these bills complement current reports. The fourth bill, intro 532, relates to pump-out infrastructure for boaters. Several eight-
No, no, I, I still have the wrong statement. I need DEP's statement.
Isn't that DEP's statement?
This says Buildings. This says Buildings.
Where's DEP?
I like when all, like, the chaos is on TV, and everybody's watching it, and Chairman doesn't have the right piece of paper in front of him, and he's talking about his backpack, and-
There you go.
Here we go. Right. Now, where are you, Vinnie, exactly? You're in the middle of the second paragraph, right?
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay.
Please, now, now we can, now I got it. Okay.
Okay. The fourth bill, intro 532, relates to pump-out infrastructure for boaters. Several agencies and private entities are involved in this area, so we would like to work with the council and our partner agencies to determine the best path to achieve the goals of this bill. And I'll talk a little bit about combined sewer overflows and the long-term control plans. New York City residents who pay a water bill have invested $4.3 billion in recent years to reduce the quantity of combined sewer overflows, or CSOs, into local waterways. Those investments and improvements to treatment technology have been paying off, as we now regularly see dolphins chasing large quantities of smaller fish that are thriving in our rivers. The waters surrounding New York City are cleaner and healthier than they've been since the Civil War. Still, there's a lot of work to do, and we will ask water bill payers for many billions of dollars more in the coming years. As background on CSOs, about 60% of the city sewers are a combined sewer system, meaning that sanitary wastewater and stormwater both flow into the same sewer pipes. This combined wastewater is conveyed to and then treated at a wastewater resource recovery facility, WRRF. Our 14 WRRFs treat about 1.3 billion gallons of wastewater each dry weather day. Those plants have a combined capacity to treat up to 3.8 billion gallons per day, meaning they can accept more than 2 billion gallons per day of stormwater. When the intensity of the storm exceeds that capacity, the excess water is released directly into a waterway without treatment. This release is called a CSO. CSOs are not illegal. They are authorized by the U.S. Department of, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, and permitted by the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, DEC. But our collective goal under the Clean Water Act is to continue to reduce the quantity and frequency of CSOs by incrementally adding more hard gray infrastructure to handle water and more green infrastructure to reduce the volume of water entering the sewer system. To achieve that goal in a structured way, DEP has worked with DEC, environmental groups, and the public to develop and implement long-term control plans, or LTCPs. There are 11 LTCPs, each representing a discrete geographic area. The LTCPs incorporate a combination of gray and green infrastructure, and each plan is specifically tailored around the unique characteristics of each wastewater watershed and water body. The work is consistent with federal CSO policy and EPA guidelines, and with the water quality goals of the Clean Water Act. The 11 long-term control plans are dedicated to Alley Creek, Westchester Creek, Hutchinson River, Flushing Creek, Bronx River, Gowanus Canal, Coney Island Creek, Flushing Bay, Newtown Creek, Jamaica Bay and its tributaries, and then a citywide open waters LTCP. As indicated in the table below, the LTCPs were developed through extensive sampling and monitoring, with hundreds of alternatives evaluated. After public comment and review, 10 of the 11 LTCPs were approved by DEC, with more than $6 billion in committed work underway. The, the CSO reduction efforts are reported in quarterly updates, each which can be found on DEP's website. Additionally, we have been publishing a comprehensive annual CSO BMP report for more than a decade. Further, the city has, since 1909, been doing an annual harbor survey to sample and analyze waters at dozens of locations around the city. These reports are available on our website, too. Water quality data from the Harbor Survey Monitoring Program is also available on New York City Open Data in almost a real-time fashion. Also, DEP publishes an annual green infrastructure report, and additionally, we publish an annual stormwater management report and an annual state of the sewers report about drainage. Virtually all of the information and data that is requested in 533 and 531 can be found in these resources. A little bit about the municipal separate storm sewer system. Our water quality efforts are not limited to combined sewer areas. Other areas of the city are served by the municipal separate storm sewer system, or MS4. In MS4 areas, stormwater does not combine with sanitary sewage. Rather, stormwater from streets and rooftops flow through separate pipes directly into nearby waterways. Stormwater is cleaner than sanitary sewage, though it can pick up sediment, street trash, and other types of pollution along the way. DEP has worked with DEC to develop and implement stormwater management plans, or SWMPs, that include numerous initiatives designed to reduce pollution in stormwater runoff. The first plan was developed pursuant to a 2015 MS4 permit that DEC issued to the city. DEC has modified citywide MS4 permits in August 2022. A key component of the SWMP is the Construction and Post-Construction Program, or C-PC Program. This program requires the management of stormwater on construction sites, so that eroded soil and other construction waste do not become a source of stormwater pollution. Some projects also require construction of stormwater management practices, SMPs, on-site to prevent stormwater from entering the sewer system and to reduce pollutants being washed from the site. There are long-term management practices, which will continue to operate after the construction is complete. The C-PC Program is an enhanced regulatory program, meaning it includes permits, inspections, and enforcement based upon existing DEC construction general permit programs. DEP initially administered this program only in the MS4 area, but under Local Law 91 of 2020, we extended the program to the combined sewer areas as well, creating a citywide uniform stormwater rule. Now, any construction project in the five boroughs that disturbs 20,000 square feet or more of soil, or adds an additional 5,000 square feet of impervious surface, must be permitted and may be required to install stormwater management practices. This requirement will create more pervious and resilient properties across the city. I want to thank the council for their partnership in implementing this monumental program. Through the MS4 Industrial and Commercial Stormwater Program, the IC Program, DEP is responsible for the inspection and enforcement portion of the State Pollution Discharge Elimination System, or SPDYS, permit, multi-sector general permit for stormwater discharge from industrial activities at privately-owned facilities in the MS4. DEP also inspects an inventory of unpermitted facilities to assess their industrial activities' exposure to stormwater and to determine whether the facilities generate significant contributions of pollutants to impaired waters and may require SPDYS permit coverage. Other programs in the SWMP include the Pollution Prevention Good Housekeeping Program, which requires city agencies to perform regular assessments of their facilities, and operations to determine sources of pollutants potentially generated by the facilities, and operations to evaluate the adequacy of the stormwater controls that they implement. The IDDE Program, which requires city agencies to track down and eliminate any illicit discharges to the MS4, and a broad range of programs that prevent floatable and settable trash and debris from reaching local water bodies through the MS4. A little bit about the Green Infrastructure Program now, you know, as touched on earlier, a key component of our stormwater management programs are the use of green infrastructure, or GI. New York's GI program is the most intensive, extensive in the, in the country. In the last decade, our GI program has constructed more than 11,000 assets, managed more than 2,000 acres, added more than 660,000 square feet of pervious surfaces to streets and sidewalks, and created more than 14,000 acres of blue belts across the city. DEP utilizes a variety of assets or types of infrastructure to manage stormwater, including rain gardens, infiltration basins, permeable pavers, and green roofs. All GI is engineered to make land and buildings more efficient at managing stormwater on-site, so that the water does not enter the sewer system. More information about our GI program is available in the Green Infrastructure Annual Report and the Stormwater Management Program Annual Report, both of which are available on DEP's website. DEP manages a public citywide GI map that includes all of the green roofs funded by DEP, as well as those for which DEP has completed a technical review. This map provides the locations and details about GI around the city, in line with what intro 102 calls for. I should note, however, that private owners can green their roofs without city approval, and so these locations on the map might not be reflected. We strongly encourage the use of green roofs and other GI wherever possible. We, DEP, offer a grant program to make it easier to install these assets. Many green roofs have been funded through that grant program, including the two biggest green roof assets, the green roof at the Brooklyn Navy Yard and the green roof at Liberty View Plaza in Sunset Park. We encourage everyone to incorporate stormwater management practices on their properties. Even efforts that seem small, such as installing a rain barrel, can have an impact, and we're always happy to work with council members to encourage these practices among their constituents. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on this topic and on these bills. I'll now turn to my colleagues to speak about additional legislation being considered today, and then we'll be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Vinnie. Just hold on for one second. I just want to note that we're joined by Councilmember Ressler. Appreciate, pardon?
Thank you.
Yeah, sure, I appreciate having you with us, and we have, I have two other, hang on, I have two other statements. Looks like I have a DOB statement and a DCAST statement. Is that right? Is that, okay, and so, and, yeah, so I'm ready to proceed with the next witness.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Chair Gennaro, and members of the Committee of Environmental Protection. My name is Gina Bokra. I'm the Chief Sustainability Officer at the New York City Department of Buildings. I'm pleased to be here to discuss Introductions 239 and 603 regarding rooftop solar systems and green roofs. Introductions 239 and 603 come at a critical moment in the city's and truly the world's fight against climate change. New York City is a leader. For years, the passage of federal climate legislation grew increasingly unlikely in Washington. Our city stepped up to the plate and, through the council, passed the Climate Mobilization Act of 2019, which included Local Law 97 of 2019 regarding greenhouse gas emissions limits for the city's largest buildings. The department and its government partners are working steadfastly to promulgate rules, communicate obligations under the law to impacted building owners, and ensure the laws implemented equitably and fair. Last year, we saw the passage of the Inflation Reduction Act and the Bipartisan Infrastructure Bill, which together amount to a once-in-a-generation investment in our country's clean energy future and fight against climate change. But our federal government rejoining this fight does not mean that we can ease up. In fact, now is the time to double down on our commitment to leaving a better New York City for future generations. As such, we applaud the council's continued leadership as it legislates an even stronger commitment to clean energy. Introduction 239 would require the department conduct education and outreach to building owners on rooftop solar system and green roof requirements. While new buildings are now required by law, Local Laws 92 and 94 of 2019, to install either rooftop solar systems or green roofs, the department is certainly supportive of educating existing building owners about the environmental benefits of these rooftop systems. We support the goals of this legislation and look forward to working with council to ensure the bill facilitates the most effective and targeted outreach possible. Introduction 603 would require that the department study the feasibility of implementing solar-ready measures for commercial buildings. We support the goals of this legislation. We would like to work with the council to ensure that this bill complements existing requirements for new buildings to install solar systems and green roofs as part of Local Laws 92 and 94 of 2019. We are also interested in ensuring that this legislation complements and is not duplicative of Local Law 24 of 2016, which requires the city to study feasibility of solar PV installations on rooftops of city-owned buildings larger than 10,000 square feet. Thank you again for your time today. I look forward to answering your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Bokra. So, yeah, thank you for your support and, and your, and your, you know, good cooperation on intro 239 and 603. We look forward to working with you on those as well. And Keith is up next, right?
Sure. Good morning. My name is Keith Kerman. I'm a Deputy Commissioner at DCAST and the city's Chief Fleet Officer. Thank you, Chair Gennaro, and other council members for inviting us to discuss intro 614 regarding low-emission exhaust pipes and systems, and I'm pleased to be here with colleagues from DEP, Buildings, and Parks. As you know, DCAST is currently working to electrify the city fleet through Executive Order 90. We recently testified regarding intro 612, which would codify the fleet electrification into law. There are currently over 4,100 electric and plug-in units in the city fleet, with over 900 more on order. DCAST manages the state's largest plug-in electric fleet, and also the largest EV charging network, at now over 1,400 ports and growing. In addition, the city also operates 4,234- In addition, the city also operates 4,234 hybrid gas or diesel units, with over 800 more on order. Consistent with local law 73 of 2013, city trucks use biodiesel blends from 5% to 20%, as do our off-road equipment units. The current goal is to electrify the fleet by 2035 for most vehicle models, about 85%, and 2040 for emergency and specialized trucks. Full electrification provides the promise of zero emissions vehicles at the tailpipe. Electric vehicles and charging are also the focus for our current sustainability funding. DCAST currently procures original equipment manufacturer, OEM, catalytic converters for cars and trucks. These reduce and convert 90% or more of emissions on vehicles, including carbon monoxide, hydrocarbons, and nitrogen oxides. City fleet trucks utilize catalytic converters and diesel particulate filters, consistent with federal and city law, to greatly reduce particulate matter. DCAST is certainly willing to explore the availability, functioning, and potential for what the intro defines as low-emission exhaust pipes. However, DCAST has not yet currently employed or verified this type of technology, and we are not aware of specific and proven products meeting the definition for cars and trucks. Research will need to be conducted to determine the availability, costs, safety, warranty compliance, durability, maintenance requirements, and effectiveness of any such products. If a product or products were available for testing and piloting, this would need to happen at a modest scale to establish the safety and effectiveness of the equipment. We are continuing to research this area and available to share that research and to discuss this proposal further with the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Commissioner Kerman. Let me just get myself together here. We have Parks that's going to be giving a statement as well? Okay. I didn't know—yeah, so that's— I think I'm gonna work backwards here. Deputy Commissioner Kerman, as we said just before the hearing started, the staff and myself did kind of a dive into what technology is out there for regular passenger cars and like, you know, like non-heavy-duty vehicles. And we really didn't find much either. So our findings are consistent with yours. I guess the question would be, then, you know, to what extent would any part of this bill—what bill number are we talking about here?
614.
614. You know, there is such technology, I guess, which we're currently using for heavy-duty and maybe even some medium-duty, you know, trucks or whatever. Regarding like the, you know, diesel particulate filters, once upon a time, there was a thing called, you know, trap oxidizers. I don't know if those are still a thing. Now, I was just wondering—from your perspective, is anything in Intro 614 kind of worth salvaging at this point? I guess this would be sort of for like the, you know, heavy-duty trucks and anything that, you know, for which there is now technology available? Or are we already doing that? I just want your assessment of that.
So sure. First, the diesel oxidation catalyst was really prior to the diesel particulate filter, which is now federal law, and then the city went back and retrofitted, which was really good policy, and we did that. So, but yeah, the diesel oxidation catalyst is kind of an older technology. There is—you know, we understand the idea. Obviously, we want to do as much as we can to reduce emissions at the tailpipe. Electric vehicles is the best solution to get to zero emission. Until we can get there, we're always looking for what we can do. You know, right now, there is absolutely work done at the kind of engineering development level in this kind of area. How do you bridge the gap between the 90% that's reduced now and that extra 10%? It's just not at a product level, you know?
And when you say the 90% mean, you know, right now, on these heavy-duty vehicles, you're using technology that gets 90%, right?
90 or more. Depends on the emission, right? So you have different—
And so like the delta, which we would seek out, would be that last 10 or less percent?
Exactly. The 0 to 10, depending on which emission you're talking about. So there's a lot of work in the engineering side. It just hasn't met the market yet. So there's no product yet that we can invest in or pilot. We asked our main auto parts supplier, Genuine Parts Company, to do a search, and they're a global company, and we buy millions of parts from them, and it's just not there yet. So I think we're still really at that research level. I don't think we're ready to pilot. It's absolutely—you know, as products are developed and come to the marketplace, you know, then I think there'd be a further conversation to have. But right now, we're in that research area. We're going to continue researching it. You know, we happily can share that research, but I just don't think there's anything to pilot yet, so I don't think we're ready for legislation.
Right. So why don't we—why don't we do this? Why don't we—because we got a lot of trucks on the road that have a lot of life left in them, and it's probably—it's probably possible to make an analysis of what there would be—like, what there would be gained by capturing as much of that 10 or less percent that we could. So in other words, just figure out like, how big the pie is in terms of—in terms of what we, you know, could possibly get, and through the deployment of advanced technology. And then some assessment of like the status of what the, you know, current technology is, you know, that is currently being looked at or what. So I guess just—we would like the committee to be supplied with, you know, what it is we're not able to capture right now in terms of the technology that we're doing, and what is out there that looks promising. And I don't think we have to turn this into a bill that would require an actual report, you know? I think we'd just like to be made aware of, you know, what it is we're not capturing now and what the, you know, technology holds. We just send that to the council, to the committee. I think that would be—I think that would suit our purposes for now, rather than turn this into a whole thing where, you know, it became a formal report or whatever. And so I think we'll just do that with 614. And I would be, you know, remiss if I didn't laud your efforts over the years, do all that you've done to make the fleet cleaner and win, you know, EPA awards and everything that, you know, DCAST has done for, you know, for—the fleets of all, you know, city agencies and all the good work that you've done. But we'll—so we'll kind of leave 614 at that for now. Okay? That's that. And what happened to Gina's testimony? Rather than call you Gina, I'll call you the Chief Sustainability Officer Bocra. How's that? Okay, that sounds—there you go. So Chief Sustainability Officer Bocra. We talked about the Inflation Reduction Act and the, you know, infusion of funds. This is, you know, a little bit of field from the actual, you know, technical part of the bills is—is the Buildings Department confident that this money is actually going to flow as we're all like led to believe? Does it go directly to the city? Is this one of these things where it goes to the state, and the state has to figure out whether we're good enough to get it or whatever? Just tell me a little bit about your understanding of that process. I'm always—one of my little sort of areas of inquiry is, you know, whether New York City is actually, you know, directly going to get money for certain things. You know, DEP could tell horror stories of money that's allocated by the state, and the city gets like 2% of it, and, you know, federal dollars that go to the city and then supposed to go to the state, but we never actually get them. And so what's your sense of these, you know, federal dollars from the Inflation Reduction Act? Are we actually going to see those? Do you have a handshake with people in Washington, or how's that working?
That's a great question. Thank you.
I know. It's a great question. I asked it.
I wish I had a firm handshake with somebody in Washington. I think that we anticipate a lot of this money coming directly to owners in the form of tax incentives for installing equipment in their property. That being said, we are working very closely with folks here at City Hall and at NISERDA to make sure that New Yorkers get their fair share of these dollars coming from the federal government. And that work is happening now, so there's still a lot of details to be worked out.
Okay. That is good to hear. If that gets jammed up, that would be Alfonso's area, and, you know, Tiffany Raspberry, they could go and shake up Washington, make sure that we get what we needed, what we need. So with regard to 239 and 603, I glean from your statement that you are generally, you know, supportive and, you know, wish to engage the council on how we can do both of these bills in a way that, you know, realizes their full potential. Is that a fair characterization of your testimony?
Yes, absolutely.
And so let that, you know, commence immediately. We look forward to that. And we always like when we get favorable replies or favorable statements from the administration regarding the legislation that we're putting forward. So let's have a good time working on that. And so I appreciate that. And Vinnie, your title is Chief Operating Officer, right? So Chief Operating Officer Sapienza. It is with great sorrow that it was brought to my attention that you're going to be gradually moving on to other, you know, greener horizons, and we are sad to hear that, but are happy for you. And like I said at the outset of the hearing, I'm actually going to leave this to Deputy Commissioner Locata, that if Vinnie has a party and I don't get invited—because I do get invited, I'll bring a whole city council proclamation, and it'll be all—it'll be a nice thing, suitable for framing or wrapping fish, you know? So I would like to come. And also, my new district, as it's drawn, is like right across the street from DEP. So when you're talking at LFRAC, I will hear it, you know what I mean? So and— Let me just—I made notes here in your statement. Now, we've long had—you know, we've been working on CSOs a long time. Why don't we just briefly take a, you know, little, you know, stroll back in time as to where we were at the outset of the, you know, CSO problem, when we were like 100-plus billion gallons a day of, you know, CSO outfall, or, you know, whatever the number was, you know, where we are today, and what is being complicated, what is being contemplated to bring that number even lower? And, you know, the whole dance that's gone on between us and the, you know, DEC regarding entering into consent orders on that. So let's do the CSO piece first, and then we'll go over to the MS4 stuff. So once upon a time in the bad old days, we were someplace, and now we're in a much better place, and we're going to an even better place. Just, you know, briefly just walk us through that.
Thanks, Chair Gennaro. And again, thank you for your leadership and our long collaboration on this. As you said in some opening statements, that we, as a city, once discharged 100 billion gallons a year of CSOs, you know, back when you and I had as much hair as Councilmember Wrestler.
Yes. I know. I'm going for the hair transplant. Late this year when it gets cold, you know, so I'll be wearing a hat all the time.
You can let—I can borrow some of this.
I—yeah, but then if I take your hair, you'll have staples in the back of your head. I don't want to do that to you, whatever. I'll do that to myself because I think I have that coming, you know? But I'm not going to do—but I'm going for it, though.
Good.
Yeah.
Me too.
So I'll see if I go through with it, but this is—this is my plan, yeah.
We've made a lot of—
That's also on the record now, which is a beautiful thing. So people will be very entertained.
So we have to move forward.
You gotta have fun. You gotta have fun, you know? So we're saying—
Yeah, so just, you know, over those decades, you know, we've made a lot of investments as a city, and a lot of that has come from—or most of it has come from water ratepayers through their water bills. Improvements were made in elections, in expanding treatment plants, and building these large CSO structures. I'll let Deputy Commissioner Locata talk about the Green Infrastructure Program.
Yeah, she's not getting away without speaking today. She's not getting away.
But we've developed, since some of the work that was done, these long-term control plans with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation and with activists in the community to come up with projects totaling about $6 billion of new work that we're going to do to, again, continue to push down the quantities of CSOs.
$6 billion in new investment to do that? And this would be spent on things like what?
So, yeah, we have, you know, in the works, in those plans, things like large storage tunnels and under Flushing Bay, under Newtown Creek, that would capture what would otherwise have been overflows, CSO overflows, capture and store that material until the rainfall ends, and then that held wastewater would be pumped to the wastewater treatment plant.
Which is also a little tricky, because if you don't get it into the sewage shooting plant in a reasonable amount of time, this stuff gets a little septic, and then it's problematic, right? Is that—that's like a thing, right?
It's exactly right. It's not just as easy as, you know, to say we're going to build a tank or a tunnel because the material settles out, it off-gasses. So there's a lot of engineering behind it. Yeah. Deputy Commissioner Locata, would you like to talk about the Green Infrastructure?
Sure. Just state your name for the record and say, give a show of use.
Yes. Pleased to be here, Angela Locata, Deputy Commissioner—
Always nice to see you, Angela.
—for the Department of Environmental Protection. So with respect to green infrastructure, we're very proud of our accomplishments. We have over 11,000 assets now that are in place. We believe that we are controlling through those assets over 500 million gallons a year of combined sewer overflows. Having said that, we have a long road still to haul. We believe that the Green Infrastructure Program can achieve as much as 1.67 billion gallons a year of control through these distributed assets that we consider source control.
And just like anything else, just like going from 100 billion gallons per year to 17 billion gallons a year, it's kind of like losing weight. The first few billion gallons are the easiest, and then it gets much more difficult. And there is presumably a—there's presumably like a long-term plan to get us below 17 to whatever we can reasonably get to. And— And regarding the, you know, consent order that we're engaged in now with DEC, which I presume we're in compliance with, right?
Yeah, so we're in compliance for virtually everything. There's a couple of water bodies where we're discussing some changes into the proposed project. It's related around disinfection, but as those discussions go on, we'll be back in full compliance.
But the order as it stands now is that putting DEP, does it mandate that DEP, you know, further reduce its CSOs and if so, by how much and by when?
Yeah, so for the 11 water bodies and watersheds where we've submitted long-term control plans to DEC, 10 of them have been approved. There's one still pending under review, but each of those long-term control plans has dates with milestones, when things need to be built, how much CSOs need to be reduced. And, you know, we can certainly get the council the specifics on each of those.
Okay, so we're at 17 and we're getting better and lesser as this $6 billion worth of infrastructure gets deployed or, you know, put in place or whatever. And that $6 billion will be over what period of time?
So the long-term control plans take us into the 2030s. Some of these projects are very expensive, are more than a billion dollars. I mentioned the two storage tunnels that were going to be-
Into the 2030s?
Yeah.
All right, that's okay. I should live to see that. Okay, good.
But I want to, you know, just highlight what you had said to Mr. Chair about it gets tougher and tougher as you try to get closer to zero and much more expensive.
Okay. Let's talk a little bit about the MS4. The MS4 discharges are of course, you know, subject to a permit that we have with, you know, DEC to do that. And based on the statement, it goes, you know, right out to local water bodies. You know, just hang on a second. You know what? I could go on all day. I've got my, you know, colleague Lincoln Russell here. He's a very busy man and he has things to do and I'm going to be here for the duration of the hearing. So let me just, I'm sure he's got great questions. Let me-
Not that quick.
Recognize him to ask whatever questions he has.
Thank you, Chair.
And then I can come back. Busy guy, this guy, very busy guy.
As we all are. And Chair Gennaro, thank you for holding this hearing. This is a critically important topic. Keith and Gina, good to see you both. I'm not going to bother you guys today. I will bother one of my favorite public officials, Vinnie Sapienza. It's always good to see you, Vinnie. I do just want to start before jumping into my questions, since I'm sitting here with my colleagues from North Brooklyn, council members Gutierrez and Nurse. Jen spearheaded a letter to Commissioner Agarwal earlier this year underscoring the need for deeper infrastructure, green infrastructure investments in North Brooklyn. When you look at the map of where we've seen green infrastructure prioritized around the city of New York, there has not been nearly enough in North Brooklyn, which is an EJ community and desperately needs to see that prioritization. So I just, Jen and Sandy have been leading on this. I just want to start by expressing my absolute strong support across the 33rd, 34th, and 37th council districts as an area that we hope this administration will deepen green infrastructure investments. So a couple of general questions and then a few questions about the 33rd, which of course is a waterfront district and deals with these issues all the time. So just firstly, is there a timeline for the city to come into compliance with the federal standards on water quality? My understanding is that New York State still uses an old standard.
I'll just jump in for a second. I realize that I was remiss in not seeing that we're joined by council members Nurse and Gutierrez and I just wanted to recognize them before DEP replies to council member Wrestler's. Good question. Sorry for the interruption. Had to recognize my colleagues and please proceed.
Yeah, thank you for that question. So it is a little complicated because you're exactly right that the federal government has a different standard now than the state of New York. When we have completed our long-term control plans on CSO reduction and when we're looking at our MS4 obligations with, which is the municipally separated sewer system, that's the four S's, we are looking at both standards. And we believe now, after the New York State DEC had an advance notice of public rulemaking, that they will be moving towards these federal standards in more of the water bodies. So we're very conscious of the changing landscape as we're moving forward with our long-term planning.
Your hope is the DEC will come into compliance with the federal standard and New York City will therefore have to comply with the DEC's modifications?
I'm not going to speak for the state of New York. I'm just going to reemphasize that we are looking to achieve the highest water quality standards possible in all of the water bodies. And sometimes that means even with 100% CSO reductions and stormwater sources, you know, controlled, we are still struggling in some water bodies with impairments. And that's mainly because a lot of these water bodies are man-made and they suffer from anthropogenic types of impairments.
I appreciate that you're striving for the best that can be accomplished, but we should be meeting the federal standard in New York City. And I hope that if the DEC is not going to swiftly make that happen, that we will go above and beyond ourselves to meet the federal standards that are laid out to read because New Yorkers deserve nothing less. Just generally on the East River, my understanding is that there's no current plan to reduce CSO outflow along the East River. Is that accurate?
The long-term control plan for the East River was a struggle and because the, again, when we were showing, and we share your goals, believe me, I completely share your goals. We want to make these water qualities as good as they can be and we want to invest in cost-effective controls. And so we really struggle in some of the water bodies that even with the reductions in combined sewer overflows, that these water bodies don't respond as well. But we do have some investments that are being made on the East River, although we do not have a very large tunnel or tank at this point.
Yeah, I just want to add too, the Newtown Creek wastewater treatment plant, which was upgraded a few years ago, we actually expanded the capacity of the plant. It went from about 620 million gallons a day in wet weather and we're now into 780 million gallons a day we're capturing at some point. So that's helped to improve water quality in the East River and reduce CSOs.
But my, well, I'd like to go into specific questions about a few key areas along the waterfront in our district, but my understanding is that we're basically diverting CSOs from Newtown Creek to other outlets along the East River by the Navy Yard, Bushwick Inlet, et cetera. I'll start with Bushwick Inlet and IC. We have some friends from the Parks Department hiding in the back. This is the most important new capital project that we are advancing in the 33rd Council District. The centerpiece of the Greenpoint Williamsburg rezoning from nearly two decades ago was a park the size of Fort Greene Park that we are waiting to see built. And the city has already invested a couple hundred million dollars in this effort. We have a ways to go and I'm frankly disappointed by the lack of action by the city to get the sites remediated for the park to be built out. But eventually, we're going to have a beautiful waterfront park or there's going to be hell to pay. So the question I have is, the first phase with access to the protected Bushwick Inlet off of the East River will open, you know, soon and complete with a beach area and a kayak launch. Despite all of the demand for people to be in touch and interact with our waterway, the city has no plans to reduce the amount of sewage overflow that flows into the inlet during most rain events. In fact, the city has the opposite plans to increase the amount of CSO here in the coming years as part of the Newtown Creek long-term control plan. Could you all speak to that? And I don't know if the Parks Department has any opinions on the fact that we're building a waterfront park here and yet increasing the amount of CSO overflow that constantly enters into this area?
And before that question is replied to, I just want to make it known, Councilmember Wrestler, that I'm not putting you on a clock, so just-
No, well, tell me when you want me to shut up.
Just knock yourself out.
I really appreciate it. I have questions, so.
I know, I just, you know-
You're very kind.
Do your thing.
Thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember, you know, a lot of it is about prioritization. The East River has made a significant recovery in its quality over the last many years whereby we have some significantly impacted water bodies. Newtown Creek, the Gowanus Canal, Coney Island Creek, Flushing Bay, and a lot of the investments that we're making in the next decade are on those very impaired water bodies. I don't know, Angela, if you want to add anything?
No, just to say that the Newtown Creek tunnel that is proposed is really maximizing the potential for the pumpback to that sewage treatment plan or what we call today wastewater recovery facility. So that's going to result in, if my memory serves correctly, about a 62% reduction in the combined sewer overflows to the Newtown Creek itself.
Am I accurate that as a result of the Newtown Creek long-term control plan, we will see additional CSO outflow at Bushwick Inlet Park?
We'll check that, Councilmember. That may be accurate, we'll confirm that.
And does the Parks Department want to comment on the increased outflow of sewage that's happening at the new waterfront park that we're desperately trying to build in our community? How are you, Matt?
I'm well, thank you, Councilmember.
Good to see you.
My name's Matt Drury, Director of Government Relations for the Parks Department. I think, as you heard, DEP plans to gather some more information and follow-up, so I think, you know, it'd be premature to kind of comment at that time, but we appreciate, we're obviously very excited about the broader project, been working closely with your office and appreciate to continue this dialogue.
I just want to underscore, I think the Parks Department should take responsibility for advocating for reducing CSO outflow at this area within the administration and for the remediation of the relevant sites as Bushwick Inlet Park moves forward. Until Chair Gennaro tells me to shut up, I'm going to keep going, or if one of you guys, no. Next up, the Navy Yard. We'll just keep going along the waterfront of the East River. Additionally, the northern end along the Navy Yard is seeing rapid both residential and commercial mixed-use development, bringing more people to the water specifically around Wallabout Channel. And I'm sure you're familiar with the Navy Yard's new plans to open up that area on the northern end of the industrial park. Wallabout is home to one of the city's largest CSOs, over 500 million gallons of untreated sewage discharge on an average year. And like Bushwick Inlet, my understanding is that the city's only planning to increase the amount of CSO runoff here to divert from Newtown Creek. Is that your understanding as well? How does that fit with new dense development happening in this very area?
Thanks for the question, Councilmember. And I'm going to give to Deputy Commissioner Locata, if you can just speak quickly about, for any new development, what the requirements are for holding or retaining stormwater?
Sure. February of last year, we adopted a new rule, which was quite, you know, monumental, in my opinion. And what this rule required is that any new development of 20,000 square feet or greater or any new impervious surfaces of 5,000 square feet or greater would, and that's on both systems, both the separated sewer system and the combined system, would have to maximize their stormwater management on-site. So really taking the opportunity when we have that new construction proposed to maximize that on-site retention or detention, depending upon the on-site soils and their capacity to infiltrate the stormwater.
Which is great and I strongly support it, but that only relates to the building that's on that waterfront site that's, you know, that's being constructed. What we are going to experience is significant new outflows of CSOs in these areas where new development is happening. And it just seems like there's no consideration. It's a totally incongruous approach from the city to say, we want to build and develop on these areas while we're also increasing sewage outflow and not managing or mitigating it or reducing it in any tangible way. It's very hard, and I understand, you guys are putting in phenomenal sums of money, these are really complicated long-term plans that you're, and you're bound by court decisions and superfund designations that are requiring you to make certain investments, but it doesn't make sense, in my opinion, to be saying, let's build dense residential and mixed-use development on sites where there is huge outflows that are only increasing of CSOs. And I don't hear a plan to reduce them in these very same places.
And, you know, Councilmember, again, you know, it's a prioritization. And all of this work that's being done is on the backs of people who pay a water bill. You know, each year, we try to keep those increases as small as we can, but any additional work we want to do to try to expedite some of these CSO projects, it's just going to impact water bill.
I hear you and I'm not, I'm not saying all of this to provide an envy perspective. I'm not discouraging the development. I'm saying that we need to make the investments to address the CSO outflows if you want to build and develop on these areas, that it has to come hand in hand. And I realize, as you noted, Deputy Commissioner Locata, we have seen improvements in the East River in recent years that are notable, that help certainly at the mouth of Newtown Creek, but I'm very concerned about the development in precisely the areas where these major outflows are happening. I will try to wrap up in a moment. Thank you, Jen. The city is implementing a long-term control plan for Newtown Creek. It will still leave us though, as you mentioned, you referenced this a moment ago, Deputy Commissioner, close to half a billion gallons of CSO discharge annually upon its completion in 2042, so 20 years from now, when I will be almost 60. Additionally, the creek is surrounded by MS4 areas where industrial runoff goes untreated to the creek during every single rain event. The city is expanding the MS4 program, but it does not currently go far enough to address the public streets and sidewalks and many of the facilities that drain to the creek. What is the plan and timeline for properly addressing all contaminated runoff that enters Newtown Creek?
Thanks, Councilmember, for that question. And, you know, it's a challenge because, again, as Deputy Commissioner Locata mentioned, this is a man-made creek with a lot of twists and turns, a lot of activity on it. The work that we're doing under the long-term control plan to build a major storage tunnel, which will be the largest in the city, will probably cost somewhere over $2 billion. We're currently, we started the design, the design contract itself is a $90 million design contract. So it's significant sums of money just to achieve what we want to over the next 20 years. But again, the work that's completed after the long-term control plans will continue on until, you know, you're as old as Councilmember Gennaro and I and we'll keep pushing forward. But these are very expensive projects that take a long time.
Okay. I appreciate the answer. It's not satisfying and I don't think you're satisfied in giving it and I know how strongly you want to do more. Last question, I promised to shut up. Just to go to the southern portion of my district in Brooklyn Bridge Park. There are kayaking programs, beaches, water-based educational programming that take place in Brooklyn Bridge Park that serve young people all across our borough, but there are no, there are strict no swimming, no wading rules in place because of our CSO problem. While the water quality at Brooklyn Bridge Park is safe enough for primary contact the majority of the year, there's no communication to park users about current water quality conditions or when CSOs have most recently occurred, leaving visitors uninformed about the risk. What is the city doing to properly inform the public and park users on local CSO discharges? We really want to have active waterfront spaces like Brooklyn Bridge Park, but we are, the communication is not there. How do we do better?
That sounds like a Parks question, right? Didn't we have a Parks person just come up and give testimony or whatever?
He doesn't, he's not responsible for Brooklyn Bridge Park, but let's see what Matt has to say.
Oh, okay, yeah. Well, I-
No, no, no.
No, no, actually, I failed the swearing earlier, so I think just really quickly.
Yeah.
Please, go ahead.
You want to swear?
I do. Great, as the Councilmember just noted, oh, thanks. Yeah, Brooklyn Bridge Park isn't under the direct jurisdiction or management of the Parks Department. We work obviously very, very closely with them as partners in terms of, so I can't speak to the exact configuration of how access is allowed, the signs, those kind of things, but we're obviously happy to work with them as close partners, get more information.
But it's a broader question, I think, that you could speak to, a Parks policy on these issues and with DEP guidance. Obviously, it's in coordination between the two agencies. I'm concerned about the 33rd as a parochial councilmember, but these same issues apply in waterfront areas across the city.
Yeah, I think I want to piggyback on that question and Councilmember Wrestler was talking about it like on the micro level in his area, but this is a citywide macro, you know, issue. And, you know, to what extent is there a communication between, you know, DEP, you know, Department of Health, the Parks Department, to make sure that the public is duly informed? I know after it rains for a couple of days, I'm not going in the water, but I'm, I know that. So let me make it a larger question about how- So let me make it a larger question about how, I guess it would be DEP and Health and Parks, right? So how does that all work?
Yeah, the agencies certainly work very closely together in terms of, you know, water quality and safety. I'll defer to...
Yes, everyone knows that, but, I mean, is there a formal, functional paradigm by which, you know, information is properly disseminated in some way that bathers, users, or whatever, you know, visitors are informed about, you know, water quality, like with regard to recreational swimming? Is that, I'm getting that, right?
Yeah, so I'll try to answer it, and we can discuss, you know, whether or not that's sufficient, but, I mean, the primary purpose of our programs for CSO and MS4 is to increase recreational opportunities of our waterways. For all of the city's public beaches, Department of Health and Mental Hygiene takes samples along the waterway, and those beaches are run by the Parks Department, so there's coordination there. During the bathing season, they do regular testing every week. DEP does a lot of analysis in other water bodies. We take samples. When there are combined sewer overflow events, those get reported through Notify NYC, so we encourage everyone to sign up for that. You can get alerts for, I think it's about 40 different water bodies, you can get an alert there, but that's generally how we get that information out.
Yeah, I would just say, you know, note to the committee council and committee staff, we should look into this a little bit, make sure that, because I think Councilmember, you know, Wrestler makes a great point in that the city has an obligation to, you know, duly inform people of conditions that they should know about.
I strongly agree. I think that the notify NYC communication is helpful, it's a good thing to do, but there should be onsite localized communication in the areas where people are interacting with the waterways to be able to inform people of the risk. And I don't, it doesn't exist now, and I think it would be very helpful for us to think about how to develop those localized strategies at key spots to let people know. If you have five minutes after this, I'm going to try to find you on the South Williamsburg issues and the Gateway to Greenpoint, so I'll stick around. But thank you all for answering these questions, really, thank you to DEP for answering these questions, I appreciate you both. I know you all want to do more, and I hope that we can find creative ways to make that happen. Thank you, Chair Gennaro, for giving me such latitude, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Wrestler, for making this a, you know, better hearing. I wasn't aware of the disconnect between the federal standards and state standards. I'm going to follow up on my own question with that before I recognize Councilmember Nurse. This will just be a brief question, so we're good. So DEC, having been a deputy commissioner there for six years, the, DEC, rather, is the agent of the federal government with regard to enforcement of all the federal government's environmental laws? How does it, how does it work, if I could sound naive about this? That DEC, the agent of the federal government when it comes to environmental enforcement, has standards that are less than the federal standards? What's that about, or lack of a better way to sort of ask it?
Yeah, I'll start, and then Angela can jump in, but in 2012, EPA issued standards for what they called recreational water bodies. Some people called it the Beach Act. So it was interpreted by some to mean that, well, where people go swimming, these are the standards that you have to meet, and DEC said, well, we have, you know, industrial canals, does a recreational water body standard or a beach act apply to those? And there's been a lot of discussion over the years, and Angela, you could add to that.
So it's like a clarification thing, or whatever. Angela, please, if you have something to add to that.
The only thing I would add is, you know, to continue where Vinnie was going with this, is the Beach Act does apply to all the coastal-facing waters, and then when you have these man-made tributaries and some of the other water bodies, like the Bronx River, Harlem River, Guanas Canal, those have use classifications. So the state of New York determines what is the best use of that particular water body, and swimming is not the best use that has been designated there. So at this point, most of those are for secondary contact or for kayaking and such. And it gets a little bit complicated after that, but that's...
Oh, I see, because the state has the authority to make designations in such a way, so that's their power, and so that's how that all happened. Okay, but we're not, you know, done with this issue fully. We'll continue to talk about it, and I thank Councilmember Wrestler for bringing this to our attention, all of his good questions and the way he advocates for his community so strongly and forcefully and with such a full head of hair. And with that, I'm happy to recognize Councilmember Nurse for questions, if you're ready to do them.
Thank you, Chair. I didn't really have many, I don't actually have any questions. I just wanted to thank DEP for coming out through the commissioner, please let him know we're very thankful for him coming out to Knickerbocker Avenue in Bushwick. Jen and I, Councilmember Gutierrez, and to our town hall came and walked Knickerbocker, which we've testified before, raised questions before around just the constant flooding with any rain. Just a drop of rain becomes a problem there. But we've seen in the follow-up, our community members sharing that the trucks have been out, and there's folks on the sewer lines, so just really want to thank you for paying attention to that. It's been a big, a very long, like decades-long struggle, 40 years of just constant flooding, and the merchants were very, very grateful to see the immediate follow-up action of that. And I'm very, you know, we're looking forward to seeing the outcome of the new, I don't know what you're calling it, the supplemental storm drain that's on the sidewalk. It was really great to see that actual physical improvement or solution, something that was being experimented, was really helpful to our community to know that this is being taken seriously, so just wanted to thank you all.
Thanks, Councilmember Nurse. Yeah, Commissioner Agarwal brought that information back to us, and, you know, we've been doing a lot of, you know, evaluation of how we can improve some of the local issues.
And I will add that, you know, way back when dinosaurs roamed the Earth, I passed the first Comprehensive Stormwater Protection Act and, you know, worked with DEP to do that. I was in the midst of writing, like, that bill, you know, version 2.0, but DEP has got a lot of things going on right now, like with regard to everything it's doing with regard to stormwater, that, and that is going to be forthcoming, and then I think we'll just, you know, crystallize that into law. This is a way of saying that, you know, more to come on stormwater management. And so let me get back to the MS4 discharges. You know, certainly, as I said before, they're done pursuant to a permit, and your testimony indicates that, you know, they go into the sewer and, you know, they pick up, you know, this is storm flow, so they pick up, you know, some contaminants, whatever it is. And, but it's my recollection that there is some kind of treatment with regard to floatables or whatever that is performed. We could talk about, I mean, it's not, you know, treatment like in a sewage treatment plant, but there is some kind of, there's something that happens that prevents floatables and certain other kinds of materials from going out with that flow, and that's probably done pursuant to the permit, if you could talk about that a little bit.
Sure, thanks, Mr. Chair, yeah. To, you know, as we mentioned earlier, the storm sewer outlets don't go to a sewage treatment plant, but there are ways to collect materials that are littered on the street.
Didn't you have, like, flocculators or something like that?
Yeah, so we've got a bunch of things, and I'll start with the corner catch basin. I mean, that basin, that box is meant to collect a certain amount of debris. We clean them out periodically to make sure that they continue to function, but, you know, we've looked at and installed a bunch of different technology from netting facilities that capture debris. We boom some of the, right at the outlet, in some waterways to catch debris. We've got these centrifugal swirl concentrators that separate the water and the floatable, so we've done a bunch of things, and there's certainly more to do.
And this is all done pursuant to the discharge permit, right?
That's right. We've been working with DEC over the years to come up with, you know, best technology for those.
Right, and DEP is fully compliant with the permit it gets from the state, right?
That's right.
So we don't have some, went on under any kind of consent decree. We have a permit, we follow the permit, and that's how that works.
That's right.
Okay, I just wanted to get that on the record and find a little bit about that. Okay, that will, that will, you know, conclude, you know, this part of the hearing from the, you know, the hearing from the administration. We always have a good time, and we learn a lot, and we work together, and that's all good. We'll have to figure out who won this session of the hearing or whatever, whether we won or you won or whatever. I think Alfonso is keeping score for your side, and Samara's keeping score for our side. We'll compare notes, and we'll, you know, indicate who won, you know, so I'm going to call it a draw, okay? I'm going to say that we had great collaboration, and, you know, we look forward, particularly on those, on those bills that we have common, that we have, you know, common cause on. So I thank the administration for being here. Vinnie, this may, I hope it's not the last time you come before the, you know, committee, but always good to see you and Angela. And, okay, so with that, I thank the administration for being here, and we'll be in touch and follow up on stuff that we agree on. Thank you all very much. Have a great weekend, have a great weekend. But we have another witness. We have one of them.
We have two witnesses.
We have two witnesses who signed up.
They're on Zoom.
Oh, okay, they're, they're on Zoom. Oh, look at all, look at myself in the, on the TV, all that gray, oh my God.
At least you got hair in your head.
Yeah.
Yeah? Sumra.
Okay, the first witness on Zoom, Aliya, how you spell that?
Sumra.
Sumra, Aliya Sumra. Feel free to commence your testimony. Thank you very much for being with us today.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Aliya Sumro, and I'm the Deputy Director for New York City Policy at the New York League of...
You know what, if you just hang on for one second, I want to make sure that the administration leaves a representative, what happened to Alfonso? Who's going to stay on the part of the administration to hear these two witnesses? You know, we need to do that. So you're going to be here, okay. So I just want to be able to assure our witness that not only the council, but the administration is going to get the benefits of your good testimony. So please continue, sorry for the interruption.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great, thanks. Good afternoon. My name is Aliya Sumro, and I'm the Deputy Director for New York City Policy at the New York League of Conservation Voters. Thank you, Chair Gennaro, and members of the Committee on Environmental Protection for the opportunity to testify today. I have submitted longer written comments. NYLCV supports the passage of Intros 102, 531, 533, and 603 because they will prioritize updating our city's water drainage infrastructure and encourage more green infrastructure investments and sustainability measures as we continue to improve water quality in the city's waterways, work to reduce CSOs, and mitigate the worst impacts of climate change. We are also encouraged that Intro 102 and 533 are being heard today as they were included on our 2022 City Council Environmental Scorecard. NYLCV supports Intro 102 because green roofs mitigate the urban heat island effect, provide insulation that cuts indoor heating and cooling costs, absorbs stormwater, and improves air quality. In addition to providing basic information about the state of green roofs in the city, this bill will also help advocates track the distribution of green roofs throughout the city, especially in identified areas that are lacking. As of November 2022, the vast majority of green roofs are located in wealthier areas of Manhattan. While this bill is an important step in creating more awareness and transparency about green roofs, to ensure there is an equitable allocation throughout the city, DEP should consider producing an annual report that identifies incentives in areas where more green roofs should be installed, prioritizing environmental justice communities and public buildings. NYLCV supports Intro 531 and recommends that the bill include language that it requires the report to consider not only current operational conditions, but also future conditions due to climate change impacts. We also support Intro 533 because our city sewer system is not up to modern best standards for managing stormwater and sewage overflows. These bills are vital to making our city more resilient, healthy, and...
Time expired.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Please continue, please continue. I took up some of your time, so please continue.
Oh, okay. I was just going to say, we look forward to working with the city council and an administration working today, and I've submitted longer written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being with us here today. We love working with LCV. Please give our best to Julie, and we appreciate, you know, having, you know, one of these bills on your environmental scorecard, and we really value your presence here today, and will, you know, duly consider the full text of your good testimony. So thank you very much, appreciate it.
Great, thank you, thanks.
You bet. And the next witness?
The next witness is...
That's Willis Elkins. Okay, and the next and final witness is, pardon?
It's our constituent.
Oh, okay, Willis Elkins, right, Willis Elkins. We're, it seems like you have a fan section here, and the, not all witnesses have that, but we certainly appreciate your presence here today, and we look forward to your good testimony. Please, please commence.
Great, thank you for allowing me to testify. My name is Willis Elkins. I'm the Executive Director at the Newtown Creek Alliance, overseeing the cleanup of one of the city's most polluted waterways. Major thanks to the committee, especially the councilmembers that represent our watershed, councilmembers Wrestler, Gutierrez, Holden, and Nurse who are here today. Also, I want to acknowledge DEP, we work very closely with them in their commitment to clean water. However, I do want to talk about a lot of the stuff that's been discussed today. We've talked about CSO and improvements to water quality that have occurred in New York Harbor, things like cleaners since the Civil War that were releasing a fraction as compared to what used to be the case, but we're talking about, I mean, like, the 1980s, there were sections of the city, huge sections, that were not connected to a wastewater treatment plan at all. And so we've made improvements over this long scale, but what's happening now is not sufficient. And so I want to talk about, like, basically, the long-term control plans and what we can expect in the coming decades. So the LTCPs are this legal framework for reducing CSO in the foreseeable future, they're woefully inadequate. They don't actually, as Councilmember Wrestler said, provide significant reduction throughout most of the harbor. Most of the harbor, and again, we're talking about 20 billion gallons of untreated sewage going to our waterways around Manhattan, Brooklyn, Bronx, Queens, Staten Island, is not going to be reduced for the foreseeable future. Think about that, 50 years after the Clean Water Act, we're still going to have multi-billion gallons of discharge every single year. On Newtown Creek, we talked about a 60% reduction, we're not going to get that until 2042. The big issue, though, is that with Newtown Creek, that 60% reduction is based on outdated data. So they are looking at, the city's looking at rainfall projections for 2008. We know already that 2008 rainfall is not what we're getting right now, and it's not what we're going to be getting in 2042 when this project is done. So a 60% reduction is only a 60% reduction from a past figure. That is not going to be a 60% reduction going forward.
Please continue, please continue. Your time has expired, but I'm not putting you on the clock, so please continue.
I appreciate that. So I just want to make the point that these plans that have been put in place are not addressing current issues, and they're not addressing future trends that are related to climate change. And the city is very well aware of this. There are, you know, agencies and mayors, Climate Office, et cetera, DEP that are looking at this, but it's not addressed in the Long Term Control Plan, so that's a major issue. The other issue I'll pass forward, which is... The other issue I'll pass forward, which is about federal standards, this is a very big issue. Again, these plans are not going to go into place for 20 years from now, and they're meeting standards that are already outdated. So these, you know, summary to say, these are very complicated issues. There's a lot to understand about water quality designations, but it really needs more communication, and it needs more coordination, and it especially needs more funding. We know that agencies like DEP want to fix these problems, but they are limited because the revenue that they can put into this, the money that they can invest in things like green infrastructure and gray infrastructure to prevent sewage overflow are all connected to ratepayers, and we can't put that on the residents of the city to pay for these investments. We need new funding mechanisms. So that's a whole nother conversation, but the council needs to be more involved in this. So I thank you for your time and really look forward to, you know, a day when people all around the city can go and touch their waterway any day of the year without fear of coming in contact with harmful pathogens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elkins, and thank you for all the work that you do on behalf of your organizations. It's not very many witnesses that have a fan section in the committee, and we really appreciate your good work. And, you know, feel free to communicate with the council of the committee regarding, on an ongoing basis, on anything you believe we need to know about and act on. But I know you've got a good relationship already with members of the committee, so we feel like we have, pardon the pun, like a pipeline between us and you already, and we really appreciate your good testimony and how you labor in the vineyard for clean water all the time. And so your comments are duly noted and are not lost on this chair or the other members of the committee. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Elkins.
Thank you, Willis.
And with that said, this hearing is adjourned.